Twenty-six regular board meeting of education is called to order. All board members are present with the exception of Melissa Johnson. At this time, we'll need to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion?
This is Shannon. I move we amend and approve the agenda for the July twenty-six, 2021 board meeting to include the updated personnel report.
Do you have a second?
This is Carol. A second.
Hill?
Yes.
Yes. Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Now, it's time for special recognition. And I've been waiting for this moment for a very long time. So this evening, we have nine, sorry, eight of our nine LMH Health Leadership Academy fellows with us this evening. And they are here to tell you a little about what they've been up to this summer, tell you about their capstone projects, and just really give you a summary of what they've been up to. So, Dr. Lewis, do you have any comments from the beginning?
Just ready to hear from them. I had an opportunity to meet briefly with them a couple of weeks ago, and just real excited to hear from them this evening, and definitely even more excited to hear the results of their capstone next Friday.
And so, for those of you who are listening, and you don't know much about Leadership Academy, it is a program that we have at LMH, and this is our third year. And this program is a mentorship program where we have students from our school district that have the opportunity to be paired with the senior executive in healthcare for the entire summer for mentorship, guidance, and leadership. And also, they have an opportunity to get paid. Like I said, it's a paid mentorship. And they have a chance to truly just explore healthcare, to see what all healthcare has to offer, all while being connected to caring adults, and just meeting people in the community, and being able to have the opportunity to do things that they probably wouldn't have a chance to do otherwise during their summer vacation. And so, I will stop talking, and I'm going to introduce Jesse Self. He is our first Academy Fellow that will be speaking with us this evening.
All right. Sorry, hello. Sorry. Okay. Okay. All right, so hello. My name's Jesse Self. I'm a senior at Lawrence High School. And just a little about me. My mentor is Rebecca Smith, and my partner is Uniqol, and she'll speak a little later. So, let's get into it. So, at Lawrence High School, I'm involved in track and field, cross-country. I hope to join the Sources of Strength program this upcoming fall, link crew, choir. In the community, I am a board member at Connect Church right off of Castle, and do some volunteering opportunities there, as well as you'll probably see me running around Lawrence a little bit, so make sure you wave. That'd be really cool. So, I'm a part of LMH Health, a part of this Leadership Academy. And the reason I applied is I wanted to get some, I wanted to get an introduction to healthcare early on. I didn't have a set path, and a lot of people tell me that's good, and I really enjoy being here right now. What I want to do probably after this academy is keep the connections I have, carry them into college. I'm planning on going to college next year. I've already applied to some schools, and hope to get a really good response in a couple of months from now. What I'd like to pursue in healthcare, probably think about cardiology, physical therapy, orthopedics, or pathology. Those have really interested me in this past couple of weeks, and really hope to pursue them now. Some leadership advice I've gotten through this Leadership Academy, one was more of a personal statement from Riddell, and he told me to be a little more confident in what I say, and be more confident in my ability, and things that'd make me a really better person if I did that. And number two is having ownership in leadership. It's really hard to do as a teen. You don't want to have ownership over your bad ideas, but if you can do that, that makes you a really courageous person. And some things I learned about healthcare, there's a lot of opportunities in healthcare, not just on-patient, off-patient stuff, but technicians, nursing, business, marketing, finance. I thought that's really cool to learn this year, and I'm really proud to be a part of this academy. Thank you.
Hi.
Just one second. Evan, Jesse, do you want to talk a little bit about your capstone project? Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. I'm a little nervous, so I actually skipped over that. My fault, guys. Anyway, about my capstone project, one thing I've been looking into, especially at LMH, is having representation in healthcare, usually for, I think, usually having representation from healthcare workers and the hospital itself. LMH doesn't have much, especially at its main campus in LMH West. There's no representation at all. Having representation from LMH itself would probably have better out, results for outpatient care, and I think that'd really help our community and make minority groups feel more included as well, and more accepted of going to the hospital to seek treatment. So, it'd be really cool. Yeah.
Thanks, Jesse.
Hi. My name is Evan Darrow, and I'm going to be a rising senior at Free State High School. My mentor for this academy was Michael Williams, the CIO of LMH Health. And just certain things that I am involved with my school and the community is that I'm involved in NHS. I'm also involved in Music Honors Society. I play tennis. I do cross-country. I'm involved in the pre-med club at Free State. And I also am, I just volunteer all around. The reason why I applied for this academy was because ever since I did a project in middle school, I've had a huge passion for the medical field. What the project was, was that it was like a guided studies thing where we could choose whatever we wanted to, like just research, and then we could present on it. I chose to research about anaphylaxis, and the reason for that was because I wanted to find a problem, and I wanted to fix that problem. So, something that I found was the EpiPen. It's very, very expensive, and for, it also expires. You know, it doesn't take that long for it to expire. And you need it. There's no, there's no alternative to an EpiPen. So, I wanted to make something that was affordable, and that was effective, like just as effective as the EpiPen. Since I was in middle school, it wasn't, you know, wasn't much, but I really enjoyed researching everything about it, and it's where I found my love and my passion just for this field. I also joined to learn about leadership, and some things that I've learned is that, interestingly, there's more, like, there's more of a business side and more of a, like a negotiation side to healthcare than I thought there was. It's a lot of, you have vendors coming in for stuff for, like, electronic medical records that you need to talk with and make deals with. I also learned that leadership isn't necessarily what we think it is. It's not necessarily being just appointed to a position saying, "You need to tell these people what to do." It's more so, it's, it's more so an activity, as stated there. It's encouraging and empowering those who are following you to do great things. And, yeah. I, what I want to do after high school is go to KU. I want to grad, I want to major in chemical engineering, and then go to med school. Thank you. On our capstone, on my capstone, LaDerrick and I actually worked on it together. It's over socioeconomic disparities and its effect on the quality of healthcare that you can get. It's scary, honestly. There are graphs that I have looked at, and the disparity between someone who is, say, four-hundred percent above the federal poverty line, or just below the federal poverty line, is massive. And, yeah. This next slide is some of the best parts that I've had in LMH. That's on the top left, that's my mentor right there, then that's my partner, and then everywhere else, that's our other colleagues that we've worked with this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Hi, I'm LaDerrick Reeves. I'll be a senior at LMH, no. I'll be a senior at LHS High School this year. I joined the Leadership Academy because I went in wanting to be a respiratory therapist. I hate this so much. Makes sense? I went in wanting to be a respiratory therapist, and now, well, I wouldn't want to be a respiratory therapist because I figured it's easy, you know, less school. And now, I realize that I want to work harder, I want to work towards furthering my education after high school, and I want to get my doctorate and primarily work in geriatrics. My mentor is Brian Bradfield, VP at LMH. I learned that leadership, I learned that anyone can be a leader, and it doesn't take a role. And I worked on my capstone with Evan.
Thank you, LaDerrick.
Hi, my name is Chase Chickway. I am an incoming senior at Lawrence High. My mentor is Cheryl Domingo. She is a senior VP for Strategy. I applied to this academy just to learn more about leadership because my basketball coach, Coach Dixon, he like said to us, he's like, "This would be a great opportunity for you guys to learn a lot about leadership," and that's why I applied. And like, as I was in this academy throughout this summer, like, there's much more than just to learn about leadership. Like, for my mentor, like, first day, we just like went right into a meeting. I didn't know what was happening. And so, but like, for her, she was like, in that meeting, she like saw that so many others didn't have an answer for what people were asking for, and so she would like go right in, and just like answer for them. And so, that's what I learned about leadership. Like, if you don't see anyone has an answer, and you have the answer, you can just go and go in and say the answer. And my capstone, what inspired me was last month, hearing about what the news in Canada, about the kids being found under residential schools. And having a little background from what my dad's told me, like how some of them like passed away through sickness, and so like, I was like, hmm, was healthcare even provided for them? So, that's what my capstone's about, is seeing if they were provided healthcare, because like, physically and mentally, they were not being treated as human. So, that's what my capstone's about. And after high school, I'm going to go straight into high school. After high school, I am going to go into med school. So, I have like a little bit of like careers to background, like have, like back up on if something doesn't plan out well for me. And that's about it.
You guys hear me?
Yeah?
Okay. Are you clear? Okay. Hey, well, hi, my name's Uniqol. I'm a rising senior at Lawrence High School. My mentor is Rebecca Smith, a VP of Strategy Communication. Why, oh my goodness. Okay, yeah. Okay, why I applied to the academy is because when I get older, I want to be a physical therapist, and so I wanted to learn like more about the medical field, and see how it works, and see like how physical therapists, how they do their job, and see what they do. So, when I heard about this internship, my mom, she was talking about it, and she was like, "This would be a great idea for you because you want to be a physical therapist, so you have to learn like more about the medical field." And so, I was like, "Well, this would be a good chance to get to learn about it." So, I was like, "I'm just going to go ahead and take my chance to see what it's about." My capstone project is about minority behavioral health, and my glasses are fogging. My capstone project's about minority behavioral health, and I wanted to talk about like the suicide rates, and how mental health is like really important, and how you have to make sure you're like keeping yourself in check, and to see how you're doing, and not just worrying about other people, make sure you're doing okay. And two examples I've learned to be a leadership is to listen to other people's opinion, and make sure you're asking everybody else what they think about the idea, and you're just not taking, you know, just not going forward with whatever you want to do, just make sure you're listening to other people's ideas. Another one is that I learned while I was in this academy is just make sure you're asking for help, because sometimes you can get really stuck, and you need your, you need help from other people, and other people's ideas. My future plans after high school, I want to go to college, either KU or JCCC, either one of those, to learn to be, to be a physical therapist, to see where it's going to take me. After that, I'm not sure if I don't, if that doesn't work out, I'm not sure what I want to do after that, but I'm hoping it does. My future career goals is to be a physical therapist, or I also do track, so either to be a track star. So, that's my other one. Oh, I already talked about my capstone project. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Uniq.
Hi, my name is Anya Scott. I'm going to be a senior at Lawrence High School this upcoming school year. My mentor for this summer was Cheryl Domingo, and she is the Senior Vice President for Strategy. This internship was actually recommended to me by a few people at my school, and at first, I wasn't going to take the opportunity, which would have been like a really big mistake. But at the time, I was really struggling with the thought about what I'm going to do with my career, and who I wanted to be in the future, and stuff like that. And I had gotten my CNA, but I was too scared to use it, and I was thinking of other career options, so I applied to get some guidance about what I wanted to do and get my foot in the door of the medical world. Now, this program is about leadership, and what I've learned considering leadership is that the title of your role doesn't necessarily make you a leader. It's what makes you leader is about the qualities you have, for example, honesty and integrity. And I also learned that a great leader is someone you can learn from, someone who really takes charge. I learned that from Russ, the CEO of the hospital. He really models what a leader is, and I observed my findings on what a leader is from him. And during this internship, I really got to experience a lot of great things. I mean, just last week, I got to hold organs like in my hand, so you know, that was fun.
Put them back.
Yeah. Put them back. They were preserved, you know, it's okay. It's okay. I also had a really fun time following RNs and learning about how to take care of patients who are coming to get their chemo. So, this program was a really fun learning experience. Like, I really recommend to tell your children the body, like, seriously. Anyways, last couple of notes before I stop talking is that after I graduate high school, I plan to go to Spelman in Georgia, and then onto med school so I can become an oncologist. I wanted to be an oncologist and go to Spelman since I was like nine years old. I've, that's been always been my two biggest dreams. And a little bit about my capstone, oops, sorry. A little about my capstone is that I am going, I have been researching about discrimination and explicit biases in healthcare. In my research, I've discovered that black people have a lot more complications with their health and die at a quicker rate than white people. I want to figure out why and how to put a stop to it so we can survive longer. I've also discovered many black people have a story about when they were discriminated against in their local hospital. One story especially, Naim Carter, who I'll be talking about in my capstone, and that sadly cost him his life. sadly cost him his life. I am very excited to share my capstone and Naim's story. Thank you.
We did have one academy student that wasn't able to make it, Zoe Simmons. So she wasn't able to make it, but turn over to you two.
Hi, I'm Tamara Douglas this year. I'm a senior at Free State High School and my mentor is Brian Bradfield, who's a VP of Support Services. I applied here to learn about different departments in the hospital and I learned from Brian Bradfield that I want to be approachable and adaptable as a leadership skill. And I got to watch surgery here from Dr. Fly, which was really fun. And I got to be part of Dr. Holman's day-to-day life as well. After high school, I plan to go to KU and become a NICU nurse or OB nurse, can't decide which one yet. And that's all.
And hi, I'm Gabby Carter and I'm an incoming senior at Free State High School. And I applied to the academy because I'm really passionate about science and biology. And it honestly just seemed too good to be true to get to spend the whole summer with leadership and practitioners at LMH. And this summer, all the leadership skills I've learned have really just helped me realize my potential and cemented my desire to study those interests that I have and learn skills like collaboration and humility and confidence and how those can just take us all so far in realizing our own goals as well as bettering the world around us. And on that note, the, one of the main interests that all three of the members of our group, Zoe, Tamaya and I had, was in obstetrics and gynecology. And this huge glaring issue in that field is the disparities in maternal health outcomes between black women and women of other groups, particularly white women. And so we wanted to study these differences and as a part of that, bring to light the lack of influence of protective factors and study the origins that these disparities have. So that was our capstone project. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Tamaya. Could you advance the slide real quick? There you go. Thank you. So as you can see, they have been busy this summer. In fact, we have a couple weekly check-ins and I think all of them at one point have said that their brains have doubled in size over the summer. So their brains have been hard at work. So I just want to thank all of you for taking, being a leap of faith and putting yourself out there to, and making yourself vulnerable to take a chance to, you know, to see what happens and look what happened. I've had the opportunity to work with all of you as colleagues at the hospital and I've seen all of you blossom and grow. And that has been the truly, truly the highlight of my summer. So thank you so much. And like the slide says, we are all so proud of you. So keep shining and I will see you at work on Wednesday. Did the board? Before I turn over this to the board for questions, my colleague, all the way back in the corner, Laura Ashley, the academy would not be what it is without her leadership. She is amazing and I enjoy working with her. So very, very talented. So thank you so much, Laura. Board, have any questions, feedback or words of encouragement?
I just want to say that I, I enjoyed this presentation every time I get to hear it, obviously not as much as Erica does, but as, as a healthcare professional, as somebody who works at a hospital, you know, this is exciting to see. It's exciting to hear the stories. It's exciting to hear what you learned about leadership, you know, and just what, what you learned about healthcare. You know, I think, I think to me, the, the, the biggest thing that I always love to hear because it seems to be a recurring theme every time is the, the eye-opening experience for a lot of the fellows that healthcare is more than just doctors and nurses, that there's, that there's more there than just that. And as somebody who works specifically on the IT side of healthcare, I, you know, I know that that side exists, but it's always fun to see other people realize that they can work in healthcare and, and impact patient care and impact the patient outcomes and not have to be a doctor or not have to be a nurse. There are so many things that you can do and to hear some of you express that you learned that and it, and it opened your, your avenues to maybe be able to work in healthcare and do some things that you never thought of before, that was, that was truly exciting to hear.
I just want to say thank you for sharing your experiences and I was really excited to hear about all that you've learned this summer and wish you the best of luck with your upcoming school year and your career plans afterwards. Thanks.
Hi, this is Carol. I just want to say thank you. And I was blown away and I, as a mental health professional, I thank you and applaud you for bringing attention and awareness to the mental, to the, the health disparities that are present, that are in our, in, within our marginalized populations. So thank you and I think I'm very hopeful about our future because of you. Thank you.
I appreciate you sharing your leadership stories and I am actually honored to see who will be taking care of me as I get older. So I appreciate the fields that you all are striving for and going towards. And Ms. Chase, I really look forward to hearing where the, the 200 Lakota or 200 Canadian residential students were found, what happens with them. So thank you for bringing that to attention. I appreciate it.
So I'll, I'll extend my gratitude for all of your work this summer and everything that you've brought to the community. I know you have good mentors at LMH, including Erica, and so it's great to see that realized potential inside of you. I do have a question. So I am a geriatric social worker and I'm going to get the name, can you tell me your name again? Okay. And well, can you tell me, when you identified you wanted to go into geriatrics, and maybe I'm just using this as an example because I like to talk about older adults, but what, what is it about your experience at LMH that, and maybe someone else wants to talk about it, that really high, that drew, drew you in and brought you to this space where you're like, yeah, that's what I want to do. I want to work with older adults or yes, that's what I want to do. I want to work in maternal health. Can you, can you talk a little bit about aging if you don't mind? Yeah.
Yeah, that's maternal health.
Yeah. Are there two CNAs then? There were, at least two of you have a CNA, correct? Yeah, okay.
I think seeing in person was a big part of it too, like seeing up close and like being in that room with them and helping them out was a big part of it for being a NICU nurse. Seeing it happen in real life was the biggest part to me.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, I appreciate it so much how you're sharing your experience and Paula is over here whispering, there's two of them with CNAs. So congratulations for that already accomplishment. Nice to meet you all.
And I would just like to say, continue to just take all of this in, savor these experiences, ask, continue to ask questions as I know that you all are. Because these experiences that you are going through right now will propel you to any career that you may choose to venture. I would encourage you to reframe your thinking to, I want to be, from I want to be to I'm going to be. You'll be amazed as you begin to speak those affirmations to yourself, the work ethic that then continues to, to follow that. And so I'm just excited and I can't wait to see what this journey leads all of you. So congratulations.
You are welcome to stay or you are excused? It's your choice. All right, next is the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Lewis.
Several things. First of all, to our, our board, your board clerk today is celebrating her birthday. So would you help me wish our board clerk, Elisa, a happy birthday? Also, you may notice in this room, there are some posters around and some decorative things on the table there. Our administrative staff had our back-to-school professional development session today. We met in this room and so it was very, very dynamic. So kudos to our staff that facilitated the training today. It was a day focused on building that solid foundation as we began to rebuild and rebound from, from this, this pandemic. So the strong foundation was all about accelerating student learning, reframing that learning loss to unfinished learning, reframing that learning loss to really truly accelerating student learning by strong relationships and use of effective instruction interventions. We're providing lunch today for our administrators. We are also excited to have the board consider approval for tonight, our selection of Jason Kingman, our district special education facilitator as assistant principal and athletic director of Southwest Middle School. Jason has been a part of our team since 2016 and he brings a wealth of knowledge and skills to this position. I think it was they're getting that set up there. I did want to highlight our summer learning program. Last week I talked, well, last board meeting, I talked a little bit about the AMESWAP data from those programs, but I wanted to highlight the elementary, middle and high school by the numbers. We had seven sites for our elementary schools with about 95 staff members and 540 students enrolled, about 76% average daily attendance. At our middle schools, we had two sites, Southwest Middle School as well as Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. Special thanks to those site administrators, Mike Gilman and Dr. Anne Hawks. There were about eight staff members at each one of those buildings and about 85 to 98 students that were enrolled there. Students in middle school took part in reading, took part in reading and math, district and comment assessments that can be used for teacher planning to meet student needs this coming year. And then for our high schools, both at Free State and Lawrence High, we served 110 students at Free State and 168 students at Lawrence High. There was a record number of credit recovery this year, 113 credits. So that was super exciting. Along with some other programs there, Avid Bootcamp, art classes, video production, students attended a CTE video production class where they received, this was for non-credit, it was an enrichment program, the grassroots project in, in the biology as well as drawing, flag spinning and music production. Now, we do have, I did have some quotes that I hope to get up here in just a minute. But one ninth grader at Free State said this, "I really enjoyed my video editing camp because I got to use Premiere Pro and be creative. Going to this camp also gave me a little insight, a good look at, at the inside of Free State and the layout of the building. After spending a week at the school, I feel more confident, confident starting as a freshman in the fall." And one of our math teachers at Lawrence High stated, "Summer learning was a big success." Many students expressed that this school year was very difficult and they were excited to be in person and have the opportunity to gain credits back. And so obviously, everything was not all roses there. We do, we did take note of some, some challenges there. Keep in mind, this was our first time offering a summer learning program of this caliber and we are looking to continue to offer that at subsequent summers. And so we want to make sure that we are looking at those lists of challenges and addressing those for next summer. Again, this is just a recap of the elementary sites that I shared with you. Go to the next one. Middle, our middle school sites there. High school. And then those are the two quotes there. Now, what we're really excited about is this summer learning, learning extension, which is new. And so we're going to continue, beginning August 2nd through 6th and then continuing on August 9th and 10th. We will bring back groups of students to work with teachers and counselors to connect with them before the start of the school year. The purpose of this is, excuse me, to rebuild relationships, connections and belongingness due to COVID trauma, behavior, academic and social situations for the purposes of setting up our students for success so that they can rebound and renew for the 21, 22 school year. And this will be paid of our, paid out of our SRT2 funds. And again, we will watch this very carefully and see if this is something we want to continue the beginning of, of next school year. All right. And after a thorough review of our back-to-school guidance with the United States Center for Disease and Control, CDC, the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, I want to send a special thanks to Dr. Farah Ahmed, who made the mistake of giving me her cell phone number, so I reach out to her quite a bit. She's our state epidemiologist. And our local Lawrence Douglas County Public Health. Last week, we announced our COVID-19 prevention measures. We've heard from parents either that were against masks or parents that are thanking us for our approach. And we do understand and respect that there are differences of opinion among our school community on this, this topic. But what we released and I encourage everyone to please take a look at this document in its entirety, but a few bullet points there is, one, it's important for everyone to understand that these mitigation strategies are subject to change. And we are still continuing to encourage people to get vaccinated if you haven't already done so. As a matter of fact, if there is a student or staff member that is exposed in our buildings and may need to quarantine, if you are vaccinated, you will not have to quarantine. And so for our students or, or staff members, we'll work with our Lawrence Douglas County Health Department to get their guidance on who needs to quarantine. They will be able to look up in Web IZ if you have been vaccinated or not, so they can confirm that. If it's not listed there, then you will be required to show proof of vaccination in order to not quarantine. So we will continue to follow public health safety measures. I encourage people to do that in and out of school. Face coverings will be required of all individuals aged two and older who are not fully vaccinated when indoors. COVID testing will be provided upon request. And then I mentioned a little bit about our isolation and, and quarantine. And I will say this, again, these strategies are, are subject to change. We are in constant communication with our local health officials. And so I would encourage the, the district community and, and staff, please be ready to, to shift swiftly should these numbers continue to rise as they are doing at the present time. And then again, encourage everyone to vote, beginning now and well, actually beginning in Ju-, July 14th through August 2nd is advanced voting. August 3rd is our primary and August 2nd is the general election. We are super excited about our classified recruitment fair that will take place July 28th from 9:00 to 12:00. Right here in this room, we are hiring full-time and part-time positions for pair educators, food service staff and custodial positions, great healthcare benefits at multiple schedule options. Also, you can, we'll have a pop-up clinic to receive COVID vaccines as well with raffles to win variety of $100 gift baskets. Then we are still continuing to promote our, and support our Douglas County students. Donation are accepted at these locations that are listed on your screen for back-to-school supplies. They will continue to accept those donations through July 31st. And then another plug for our amazing academy students that just, just left us, we will be hearing their capstone projects July 30th from 11:30 to 1:00 at Mucelli's this Friday, this, this Friday, right? And then lastly, we are part of the Kansas-Kan Success Tour. This is a 50-stop tour from the Kansas State Department of Education. Dr. Randy Watson, along with some other staff, will be touring the state similar to they did, similar to what they did during a previous Kansas-Kan tour. And we're encouraging students, parents, all LPS staff members, board members, higher education officials, local business leaders and community members to please come out on September the 7th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM right here in our boardroom to hear from our state folks as they highlight Kansas-Kan success. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Lewis. Next is the report of the president of the Board of Education. On Friday, I attended a board leadership training course by KASV for board presidents, vice presidents, clerks and superintendents to learn about board leadership and effective boards, school boards. I also had the opportunity to go to lunch last weekend. I also had the opportunity to go to lunch last weekend and coffee this past weekend with a couple of students from our district who have an interest in getting a mentor, and they have an interest in healthcare. And so, that was, that was pretty fun to do that, making connections there. And lastly, so as Dr. Lewis mentioned, the local primary election is right, going on, the advanced voting is going on right now. August 3rd is when the election will be, and I've been to a couple, a few forums where opinions and statistics have been presented as facts, and so I would just urge the community to exercise caution and be, just be cautious and vote wisely, and make sure you do your research and ask lots of questions, and don't assume what's being said is factual. And that is my report. And next is public comments. May I have a volunteer from the board read the public comment, please?
I got it. USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While you are not required to share your contact information, we ask for that information so district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. The board president will invite comments on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit comments to three minutes.
All right. Do we have Erin Payden?
Yes, yes, please.
Does one of these work? So, Erin Payden, I have a couple kids in the school district, and they're luckily both old enough to be vaccinated, but they have a little half-sister who's four years old that can't be vaccinated and because it's not available yet. And I'm here about the mask guidance. The American Academy of Pediatricians came out and suggested that we have a 100% masking policy for everybody 2 and up, and I sent that information out to you guys. I wanted to come and say it in person because it's, I think that there's a lot of misinformation about how viruses work, and the fact that breakthrough infections are very, actually pretty common, and so we are going to have vaccinated students getting infected with the virus and carrying it home and infecting their people in their household who are their little siblings. So, that's going to happen in our school district if we have a mask as optional for vaccinated people. So, that's not an if, it's a how many times are we going to infect young people who have no protection? So, I think it's, there's, if you read what I sent out, there's, it's a very solid argument for the wisdom behind masking. We're all masking right now, I think. That should be telling. It's a, you know, it's the one way, I mean, I could get into science behind it, but that's a, an organization that's, like, their directive is to protect the health of children. That's what they know how best to do, and they're coming out with that recommendation, and I think we should follow it. So, Dr. Fauci, when asked about that, agreed with it. The Surgeon General of the United States masks in public spaces because he has a child who's under 12. And if the Surgeon General is going to do it, you know, who's vaccinated? I think that should work for the rest of us, too. So, I just think it's exceptionally foolish for us to, with the numbers rising right now, for us to go into the school year thinking that we have a magic bullet that's already proven to not be a magic bullet. So, that's it. Do you guys have any questions for me on this?
Yeah, thank you so much for coming, Erin.
I do have a quick question, and that is, the guidance is subject to change. I know I got six seconds. Guidance is subject to change. I wonder at what point, like, as we see the rates increasing in Douglas County at a fairly catastrophic rate considering our vaccination rate, at what point do we say, hey, wait, this isn't, this isn't working, we need to reconsider? How does that, how does that occur?
Thank you for coming so much, and thank you for coming to our board meeting to express your concerns, and we definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
But is there?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
We're done. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Feel free to email the board, district leadership, if you have further comments to share. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
I want to also, just really quick, but there's, the COVID-19 task force hasn't met since April, so.
Erin, we're done. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
I have emailed, but my questions weren't answered.
Thank you, Erin.
Only you and Kelly Jones wrote me back, so.
Erin.
I'm not upset, I'm just.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. We need to move on with our board. Thank you for coming. Uh-huh. Thank you. Okay. Next is board commentary.
For my fellow board members, I wanted to share a reminder that the registration window is now open for the Kansas Association of School Boards Annual Convention. The convention will be taking place this year, a different weekend than it has in the past. It's earlier, it's November 5th through the 7th, and it's in Overland Park at the convention center. Definitely think there will be a lot of great programming. It's my understanding there will be some virtual options if you are not comfortable attending in person, but they are planning to have some in-person events as well. So, I encourage you to look at what is available and register for that if you are interested. I'll definitely be there, so I would love to see some more familiar faces as well. Wanted to share just a couple of thoughts. One is related to the mask guidance and our risk mitigation plan, and I think, first off, I'll say I appreciate Erin's question about what would the threshold be, thank you very much. What would the threshold be for us to make a change to the guidance, and so I hope that we have some further discussion about that. I personally, I appreciate the release of the plan this week. I see it as setting a bare minimum of what we need to do going into the fall semester, and I just wanted to share with the board and the community that I am also fully supportive of requiring additional mitigation measures to protect our students and staff and their families, including a universal masking requirement. And I think that we are going to have to very carefully watch what is going on in the community and the data about community spread even in the next couple of weeks. I am hearing a lot of really concerning things from the medical professionals that I know very well. Rising concerns about the spread of this variant are not hyperbole or fear mongering. Sorry, I cannot see out of my glasses to read my notes, so pardon me. Today's data release from Lawrence Douglas County Public Health showed the positivity rate now for our, our community is over 4% again. It was 4.4% as of today. Cases per 100,000 have risen substantially in the last 14 days, up to 174.58. I was looking at their epidemiology site today. An increase in the 14-day moving average of cases that compared to the last time they announced that data, it had increased over 172%. KU is being inundated with COVID patients. Children's Mercy is on triage because they are full. LMH had nine COVID patients inpatient today, and that's the highest census they've had since, I think, February. So, I do, I do think it's important for us to have kind of some further conversation about what those, what those metrics will be, and I just wanted to share that. In addition, I had one more thing to say about, there's been a lot of discussion, and I know it's on the agenda tonight, for us to approve ratification of our agreement with the LEA. I really appreciate the negotiations team and all that you have done to work through what has admittedly been a really difficult negotiations year because of the financial situation we are in. I know there's been a lot of discussion out in the community, I've seen it on Facebook, about, you know, why can't we pay our staff more? What is, you know, what is the problem? And I just wanted to give a reality check for some of that rhetoric. The state of Kansas, specifically our state legislature, has had illegally underfunded our schools for the better part of the last decade. Since 2010, it has only been within the last two years that we have had a school finance statute that the state Supreme Court has considered to be constitutional. And in fact, the funding under that formula is not going to be considered adequate under the court's metrics until next school year. So, we have not received constitutional funding for our school district since before 2010. So, it's no surprise that our school board, as has been true of school boards across the state, have really struggled with how to allocate these limited funds in a way that meets both the educational needs of our students and the financial needs of our staff. We have, we have struggled, as have all school boards. It's, and even with that constitutionally approved funding statute, our inflation-adjusted funding levels currently are only equivalent to what we were receiving in, like, kind of the 2009 to 2011 timeframe. While at the same time, nearly all of our fixed costs have increased, many such as, especially our insurance, are rising at a rate that's greater than inflation, although this year we have an opportunity with our health insurance, which I'm really pleased to see, but if you look at our property and casualty insurance, if you look at the trend in our health insurance over time, if you look at all of these other things. So, the rhetoric that I'm hearing and seeing on Facebook and kind of out there about all of this is really detached from the reality of what it has taken as a school board and a district administration to operate a school system and educate students within the budget constraints that our school district and all school districts in our state have faced over the last decade. So, I just, I'll echo what Erica said. Please, as voters, I'm asking you, please be fully informed about the history of school finance in our state and the history of how our district has tried to manage what has been some of the most difficult financial times in public education in our state. Before you blame and shame school boards for budget catastrophes that frankly have been created by the Kansas Legislature and not by the people sitting at this table or the people who have sat up here with me during this last 10 years. So, I've always, always, always supported increasing wages for our teaching staff and our support staff, and I'm going to continue to support that goal. It's not a lack of desire or will on the part of board members to do better. I assure the community and our staff, there's just no easy answer. And so, I just, I felt really compelled to share that because I've just seen and heard a lot of things that make me really concerned. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon.
So, I just want to take a moment to share a couple of things. One, I also have, I want to extend my appreciation to Dr. Lewis and his team for putting together the COVID response plan for the 2021, '22 school year and the thought that went into that and the work that went into collaborating with our health department. I appreciate everyone's efforts. I remain highly concerned about the lack of requirement around the honor system, I think is the word, the phrase we used within our documents, and I would encourage the board to consider asking those who would like to not wear a mask to show voluntarily that they have received a vaccine. That, to me, is part of our mission to ensure that our students remain in person, in school as much as possible, and that we protect the economy in Lawrence and the jobs of the staff that we, that we employ. But most importantly, I'm, I do not want to have another year where students are not in person. I just want to see that as much as possible, we've done everything we possibly can to ensure that our students are in school, and that requires that we're vaccinated. And right now, in this county, we're vaccinated, about 55% of us fully vaccinated, and in our 12 to 15 range, that number's around 45%. So, that would mean that when you go into a middle school, you ought to see something equivalent to that. Now, I would anticipate that most of our parents would honor the request, but unfortunately, within minutes of the school board, I mean, the school district announcing their plan, there were many parents on social media explaining to us and providing us evidence that their full intention was to, in fact, not disclose that their child hadn't been vaccinated or they hadn't been vaccinated, and in fact, to show up in our building without a mask on anyway. So, the honor system right now is just, the stakes are too high. I would really like to see this district move to a voluntary proof of vaccination because I think it also incentivizes our community to get vaccinated, which is the only way that we will stay healthy. So, I'm requesting that we have a report back on how we could do that at our next board meeting or upcoming shortly so that we have enough time for the district to implement such a plan. And then, the other thing I wanted to comment on was our partnership with the city. With very little notice, the city has made a determination that they will be cutting RAP funding. That is a program for which we also radically need every year, but particularly this year, as we move to make sure that we are taking care of our students' mental health. We saw this year great risk to our students in this last year as it related to COVID and their inability to be in our buildings and us to have contact with them and the experiences they had quarantining and all the pressures of the pandemic. If there was ever a time we needed RAP, it is now. That service is provided by Burton Nash. They meet their clients where they are at, and that, their clients are in our buildings. It's a partnership we depend on, and to give us little or no notice that you will be cutting that funding is absolutely inappropriate because we do not have time to respond in the current fiscal situation that we are in. So, I'm asking our city partners, as I did with the crossing guards, if you are changing your funding structure as it relates to things that have, that impact the school district, I would greatly appreciate some notice that is more than the night of the meeting.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else?
May I add something?
Oh, of course.
Kelly, I really appreciate that you commented on the RAP program. I had it in my notes, and given the length of everything else I said, I left it out, but I do feel compelled to add something to that. So, we are often asked, what can we do to increase the pie for our district in terms of the funds that are available to us to run programs? We can't. We have no power as a board to do that. The only way that we have access to additional funds to run programs that are above and beyond what we are doing is if our community partners, such as the city or the county or their organizations, fund programs for us. The city has the ability to raise their mill levy if they want to raise more money. We cannot do that. And so, I think that this is another example of thinking about the school district as a, an entity that has the same budgeting and funding authority and abilities as the city, when that is, the opposite is true. This is, maintaining the RAP program at its current funding level is one way that our city and our community can help us. As Kelly said, we desperately need to have those RAP workers in our buildings. They make such a difference and such an impact on our students and the supports they receive, and I just, I think that, that we have to think about this as community wraparound rather than something that because it happens in our buildings, we ought to, we ought to be fully responsible for making it happen. So, thank you.
This is Carol, and I just would like to thank Kelly and Shannon for bringing that up, but I've been to the city commission forums, and I am going to say that I have not heard those questions or conversed, those questions given to our candidates who are running for those positions that are going to invest or disinvest in our students, and I. And I ask that everybody go out and vote on August 3rd for candidates who are going to, who are going to invest in our students. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right.
I think, I just want to add to that RAP question. It's not, it's not so much that there's a funding priority shift from the city who retains the right to shift their priorities, but to be a good partner, they need to give us warning. This impacts children who have high needs, so we need to understand what the replacement plan is, and I understand that there are meetings coming up, but we really have a limited amount of time to respond. Better communication between the city and the school board would be appreciated.
Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
This is Paula, a second. Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
The next order of business, 3.1, ratification of tentative agreement with the Lawrence Education Association with Samri Devon.
Good evening, Board. Samri Devon, Director of HR, and along beside me tonight is Megan Epperson. She is the co-chair for the negotiation agreements, negotiation team with LEA. So tonight, we'd like for, first, we're going to have Megan start off, and she's just going to break down and highlight some of those key, key points in the tentative agreement.
And I'm going directly off of what's in the agenda, so if you are following along with that. The first piece, I'm going to try to hit not necessarily every single element, but try to grab a couple of key features. Article 8 salary, I'm going to talk a little further on though. Article 8 for salary in terms of kind of the big pieces for certified staff pay. This year, we've ratified horizontal movement, which corresponds to education credits. No vertical movement, which generally corresponds to experience. We've also not, or not opted for any salary dollars added to base this year. Not included in the Article 8, and the agenda is also that we have a reopener clause for salary for, after the September 20 counts for students. This is just to see if there's been any changes due to financial situations, any changes in S or things that, you know, have otherwise been evolving every other day for us, just to see if there's any other modifications we can do. On my end of things, in terms of ratification from the LEA side, I do want to note that this year, we had the highest number of no votes than we've had in our recent recollection. This really, I think, indicates the kind of lack of sustainability in continuing with this path of salary. And I definitely do want to echo what I heard from Shannon earlier about, you know, being stuck in the financial situation, we're stuck. Our teams did talk about that, and I think we've definitely agreed that, you know, coming this fall, we need to start with the salary conversations, we need to start with a proactive plan so that it can work backwards in terms of budgeting, any potential cuts, and kind of look at a long-term lens, recognizing that we can't fix what we can't fix, but what can we do now, rather than trying to find cuts backwards. So, that's kind of our hope moving forward in regard to salary. For the rest of Article 8, in terms of language pieces, we did do a modification for language that allowed for any graduate-level coursework that was taken concurrently with, during a master's degree, would allow that, that certified staff member then to be placed on the schedule as appropriate to the number of hours they've taken. Kind of going through more of the articles here, Article 9, it was approved by the board, I think, back in April for the change to medical insurance, so we will see a decrease in premiums, so there will be a reduction in cost for families that are taking medical insurance to the district, as well as a premium rebate for certified staff members this fall that will be approximately $366 prorated for FTE in the length of contract that will be coming back to certified staff as well. Anything so far? Okay. Article 10 was just a language cleanup. Article 15, and this kind of sprinkles throughout the contract. We did some work and heard from the library media specialist committee this year, and we've been, made a couple of modifications at the secondary and elementary level to provide some additional time for them, especially given the amount of time and effort that technology and the checkout and check-in of technology is provided throughout the pandemic. We're recognizing that and providing them some additional time. Article 16, there is additional, couple of changes for language cleanup, moving to quarters for elementary, some middle school supervision regarding bus duty. And then, kind of blending into Article 17 as well, Free State High School voted on a redesigned element regarding flex scheduling, following, I believe it's Article 30 of the master agreement. So we added language to allow for that for the 2021-2022 school year. And I think that's it at a glance, and then LVS committee, Samri was going to speak to.
Yeah, so we are going, both sides agree to, to go ahead and convene a committee of LVS members that would be composed of both leadership and teachers. We find that the master agreement doesn't always support that they, the work that they do in the virtual world, and we want to make sure that the master agree, agreement supports them as best as we can. So, that's our highlights for the evening.
I had a quick question. So I noted in the board enclosure that when it related to the Free State redesign language, specific language, it all sunsets at the end of this school year. Is that because we anticipate we might need to tweak the changes going into next year? I just wanted to clarify. I assumed that's what it was for, is that it's not that we're going to stop doing it, it's that we wanted to have the flexibility to change it or recraft it going forward, but I just wanted to confirm.
Absolutely, you're correct. It's procedural on our end that any modification to the agreement, we try it for a year, see what it feels like, and then reanalyze as a group, and maybe at that time then. It also gives the opportunity, if there are other schools that want to join in or enjoy it, we can then use that time to shape language for other buildings if it's applicable, if it's, if it was effective.
Okay.
So we have other things that have sunset before, after a year, so.
Okay. And then, yeah, I just lost the question I was going to ask. If I think of it, I'll raise my hand. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I'll just say on the part of the, I'll speak for myself, but as a member of the negotiation team, GR and Paula and I sit on it, I want to acknowledge the statement you said about this having a high rate of no votes. And I can appreciate why that would be after this particular year, but in any year for our educators. We are not satisfied with the outcome either, and we have committed to and continue to commit to working to find a path toward increasing or improving our salary package for the next year, so we are ready to start that work immediately.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
I understand a lot of work on all sides went into this agreement, so I just want to extend my gratitude for everyone working together. Speaks to teamwork and collaboration, so thank you for that. So, we do have a recommended action. Do we have someone who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the, did you want to do it?
I'm going to do it.
Go for it.
I move the Board of Education to ratify the tentative agreement with the Lawrence Education Association.
This is Shannon, a second.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
So, next order of business is item 4.1, which is the Equal Opportunity of Schools Report. Dr. Johnson, looking forward to hearing about this report.
All right, good evening to the board. It is my honor to stand before you and to be able to share information that I believe is an example of the equity work that takes place in Lawrence Public Schools. This is our first year of partnering with equal opportunity schools, and although it has been challenging at times because we have been in so many different formats, I'm so appreciative of the fact that Lawrence High School, Free State High School continued down the path to make changes and to change outcomes for children of color as well as children who live in low-income environments. Let me take just a moment to share with you a little bit of information about equal opportunity schools. First of all, you will see the direct alignment on the screen from 2.2, Student-Centered Learning, Decreased Barriers to College and Career Readiness, pre-K through 12+. The report that we are going to share with you tonight focuses on access opportunity. It is designed to increase participation rates in AP classes for students of color and low-income students while transforming school culture and adult mindsets. And you will see some of that mindset work, if you will, or data throughout this presentation. Equal opportunity schools, although it's been a very challenging time to get input and survey data, we have prevailed. And partly, we have prevailed because the two assistant principals and associate principal and assistant principals that are here tonight, you'll hear from them later on, but primarily because of our partnership director. Her name is Amber Brown. And if we could pull Amber up at this time? We can pull Amber up at this time? Amber is joining us from sunny Arizona. And she's sharing her own screen. I see you, Amber.
Hey.
Right, we were just waiting for you to come on the screen.
Okay.
What is she doing?
All messenger right now.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to wait just a second for Amber to come on the screen. Amber has walked us through this entire process where we have surveyed students, where we have surveyed teachers, where we have looked at the data, analyzed the data. Every question that we have had, Amber has helped us along the way. So, very excited about the fact that she is here with us today. She is sharing the screen and will take us through the presentation. So at this time, Amber, I will give you the floor, and then I will come back on in a few minutes.
All right, thank you, Dr. J. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, so, my name is Amber Brown. I am your partnership director with Equal Opportunity Schools, and I'm so excited to tell you all about the work that we did this year, so let's just jump right into it. So, just as a little refresher of the work, here's the mission of Equal Opportunity Schools. EOS is on a mission to ensure that students of all backgrounds have equal access to America's most academically intense high school programs, and particularly that students of color and low-income students have opportunities to succeed at the highest levels. So our overall goal is to create a culture of access and a good experience for all students. So, across the country, we see gaps in advanced placement. White students are 1.3 times more likely than Latinx students and 1.8 times more likely than Black students to be in AP courses. They're also 189 times more likely than Alaska Native and Native American students to take the AP exam. And there are gaps that are similar for Lawrence as well. So, white students are 1.4 times more likely than Latinx students, 1.9 times more likely than Black students, and 2.7 times more likely than Alaska Native and Native American students to be in AP classes. And so, when you look at the representation present in your AP programs, it can function as an indicator species of the health of your equity ecosystem in a school, and it can bring to light the dynamics of a school environment that can inhibit or can facilitate change. So, we know there's great value in upper-level courses. As a matter of fact, in a survey taken by LPS staff, what do you think they state was the number-one benefit of taking an AP course? So think to yourself, was it developing study skills, being able to pass the AP exam, having a rigorous college-like experience, developing critical thinking skills, or earning college credit? D was correct. It was critical thinking skills. So we know that the development of those critical thinking skills are essential for most careers, whether students want to go to college or not. You know, most of the skills that you get from rigorous courses are necessary for any career, the stamina, the time management, the willingness to learn from failure, the opportunity to challenge and to stretch yourself, you know, to gain confidence. And of course, it's better preparation for college-level work and increased likelihood to graduate in four years if they choose to go to college. But it's also fun to have the opportunity to actually take an in-depth exploration of your subject areas of interest. So given the value of AP and the mission of EOS, let's see what participation in AP looked like at the beginning of this year. So, this was your school's participation chart for the fall of 2020-2021 school year, before we began working together. This chart is developed by looking at AP enrollment for all 11th and 12th grade students. So the end sample size at the bottom of the chart represents the total number of 11th and 12th grade students in that subpopulation. As an equity team, or also just amongst the school leadership, we use this in addition to an opportunity chart to make a goal about how many students we would like to add in the next year. Now, by no means do the people actually just go out and find any Latinx student in the hallway and put them in an AP class. We still create an outreach list of those students who are actually prepared for the rigors of advanced studies. So given that, I have been working with your high schools and sharing tools to think about and create action plans for what might be occurring. So now I'm briefly going to walk you through what we did this year. Now, what does the first year look like? This is a really high-level overview, looking at it from 30,000 feet. Step one is study, and that's where we gather the data. Step two is strategize, when we use that data to uncover blind spots and begin outreach. And the third is support, and that's where we work together to support the newest additions to AP, the staff, maintain the outcomes that we've achieved. But once again, this is super foundational diagnostic year. We had to figure out how to get surveys done in a pandemic, and how to plan for outreach in a pandemic, and then how to best use the tools in a pandemic. So, this year, we'll talk more about how to best support staff and students in creating a growth mindset for everyone. So the first part was study. We had a building launch where we educated the entire staff on the partnership. The second part was, is the most important, and it's also the hardest, surveying students and staff with at least 90% participation. We need those surveys in order to create the tools that we use to even do this work. And the third part is forming an equity team that will lead the work throughout the year. So, you all, they all created an EOS equity team, and they are the real MVPs, because I can share materials and smile and spread joy, but they're the ones who come together and do the work or nothing moves forward. You know, I don't know your students or your coworkers or your community, they do, or you all do. So, once again, we'll be looking harder at the makeup of our equity teams this year. After the survey comes back, the data is synthesized into this thing called Equity Pathways Report. We get outreach lists, and we begin to formulate a multi-tiered, diverse outreach plan. You know, if you only do the same outreach activities every year, you're only reaching the same types of people, and it can start to color your beliefs about what types of students and families are actually interested in a more rigorous course. So as I said earlier, Equity Pathways Report, synthesis of the data that you receive from staff and student surveys. Now that you have that data, what do you do with it? We use this Equity Pathways Report to help us uncover blind spots and bright spots from what the survey said. As your PD, I help y'all turn that data into action. So I'm going to quickly share a couple of data points for you from the aggregate Lawrence School District Pathways Report. So real quick, a bright spot, it's not that students don't care about college or their future. 89% of the students who took the survey say they want some sort of college degree. And what's great about the Equity Pathways Report is that it takes student data and responses, and it compares it side by side to staff data. So in this case, you can see that staff estimates 74% of your students want to go on to receive a two- or four-year college degree. So is there a messaging problem here? What can we do and what, like, what's the work that we can do together to get those numbers equal up? And what's the work that we can do together to get those numbers equal up? A blind spot. Many students don't feel challenged in their classes. We know that academic rigor is tied directly to college preparedness. You know, these classes need to challenge them in a way to prepare them, but that starts to bring up the question of rigor versus volume of work when you start looking at these numbers. Now remember, once again, this was last fall and this is all diagnostic. You know, we're doing the work now to address what we see here. Another bright spot. Now, some students feel like they don't have an advocate, but 110 of the staff that took the survey said they're willing to have one-on-one conversations with students about upper-level courses. So this year, another focus will be a training about what trusted adult conversations are and what they aren't. You know, we're not forcing a student into an upper-level course. We're asking them, what do you want to do? And how do I make sure that you are in the classes that you need to be to get you there? Whatever those classes may be. Or, who else can I have speak to you? Maybe they have more information and they can still help us get you where you would like to be. Which leads me to this blind spot. They don't know that adults believe in them. So, this chart shows what students have stated are their barriers to upper-level courses. The two highest barriers are welcoming and adult encouragement. So personally, what I saw working in schools, it often wasn't the case that adults weren't encouraging students or trying to make them feel welcome. It was the way it was being done wasn't being internalized by students. And there were unsaid things that would change the feel of the place too. Like, if advanced classes are all in one wing and you can see the difference in race and clothing expense quite obviously when the bell rang, you don't really need to say anything for students to feel like they don't belong down there. So, we use the illumination of barriers, of disparities between staff and student views to figure out how do we target our message and make it explicit that you are welcome and that you are ready and we want you here. So one way we do this is by using this incredibly powerful tool that also comes from the survey, the Student Insight Cards. We go from whole-school insights to individual student insights. Now, every student will get one of these whether they take the survey or not. But if they haven't completed the survey, it'll look like this. Nothing that you couldn't get off of Power Schools or Skyward, whatever data management tool you all use. If they have taken the survey, you'll get their goals and their interests. You'll see who they've nominated as trusted adults as well as who they say are adults that help them with study skills. Because you know, sometimes there are people that you don't really tell about your private life, but they're the ones that really get you together and hold you to high standards when it comes to academics, study skills adults. You know, if a barrier is adult encouragement and over 50% of staff say that they're willing to have a one-on-one conversation with students, how do we leverage these trusted adults? How do we break down that barrier? So there's the opportunity for staff to recommend students, those are those little apples. We have stars that will indicate if the student has test scores that are comparable to other students in AP. Because, yeah, test scores are only as helpful as what they're compared to. But even then, we know that test scores aren't always the best indicators of success, so what else can we look at? You're gonna find out about their readiness indicators, what mindsets they have and that show that they're ready. You're gonna find out what barriers may be keeping them out of AP. And then, my favorite part at the end, this is where we hear directly from students about who they are and what they want their school to know. All of this comes from the survey. It's why it's vitally important that we have every student's voice heard because it's not just about advanced courses. If someone reached out to a school about a welding internship, we could say, here is a stack of 17 students who said they want to go to trade school. Help them. It can help expand our outreach. And I do want to take a quick moment to pause and let you know, students don't self-select, I have a growth mindset, or I have a barrier. It's derived from the way they take the survey and their comments. There's a battery of questions that they go through, and that's where we receive this information. So, now I'm gonna share some of the outcomes of using those tools outreach. Now, these slides are available for you to be able to sit with this data, but I'm gonna take a moment to let you look at it and I'm gonna provide a little bit of background about what's going on. So, first things first, I'll explain that, right here, you are seeing a comparison. A comparison between fall, which is in blue, and course request for the spring, which is in green. So this is a comparison of what students were enrolled in AP in the fall and then what students are going to be enrolling in the green. So it's been great working with Lawrence this year, even though it's been quite different with the late start and with our global context. And it's because of that context that, across the country, rigorous course numbers dropped significantly. As far as most of my schools were concerned, the name of the game for this year has been maintenance. You know, the main focuses were like trying not to lose funding, staff, classes, and especially students. Because on top of the shifting priorities for school staff, students just didn't feel like taking many academic risks this year. And who could blame them? But, I mean, with that in mind, I would like to congratulate you all for being able to hold the line and actually make some growth in some of the targeted categories you chose to focus on. Whatever you all have been doing to reassure your students and to continue to inspire them to reach their fullest potential has been successful. And I didn't push or ask for much this year. Honestly, in the year that we had, I was just saying, what are you already doing that we can expand on? And maybe what's one new thing that we can add? But Lawrence and Free State didn't just sit with that. They did some incredibly creative work with the tools that we provided and they pushed. And I'm not just blowing smoke here. I have three schools right now who are just now doing their surveying and they're only surveying students in summer school because they didn't make this work a priority. Lawrence and Free State did. If they continue on this course with bigger and more targeted plans for this year, this chart is going to look very different next summer. So, in an effort to protect their privacy, I've only used their first initial. But I still wanted to take a quick moment to introduce you to and celebrate some of your first-time AP takers. So this is A from Free State. They will be taking AP Bio for the first time this fall. They want to be a pediatric oncologist or work in oncology in general. And this is who they say they are as a student. They say, getting the best grade is as important as feeling confident about what I've learned. And I learned for my sake, because I want to be someone great in the future. I love a challenge because it pushes me to see what I can really do. And what they want the school to know, I wish they knew why I'm adamant about graduating high school and college. I wish they knew my background before I moved here so they can truly understand me. This is what I love about those insight cards. Because now, having read this, their counselor or trusted adult can use this as a jumping-off point in the conversation with them. So, let's meet S from Lawrence. So this is S. They will be in AP Language and Composition this year. And as far as career interests, they say, I want to be a pediatrician or a lawyer. But if they both fail, I still plan on being in the medical field. I come from a family of nurses. But I'd also like to be a professor and maybe teach about the body and the way it works, or anything else science-wise. And who I am as a student? Whenever I'm battling an obstacle, I do my best every time to push through and persevere. I haven't always been the best student, but now my education is what matters most. Outside of high school, I have plans for college and to move. And what I'd like the school to know? I go through hard times to be motivated and so do plenty of other students. Let's talk to this student about their future and how to make sure that they get there. So, currently, we're in the support step. We were tracking those course requests as they came in, adjusting outreach plans as necessary to target specific groups, and we plan on continuing outreach into the fall as well. We'll also be taking an inventory of current supports and formulating a student and staff support plan. And that's gonna expand on what they're already doing and what we can add to. So, one of the tools that we will use to do that is the Support and Belonging Report, which contains key insights on support and belonging from your students as well as from your staff. So here are a couple of data pieces. Here's one data point we'll be looking at centered on student connections with their teachers. 60% of your 11th and 12th grade historically underrepresented students, so that's low-income and students of color, said that it was true that their teacher takes time to get to know them. However, 79% say, my teachers show that they care about me and my learning. It's interesting what adding the learning aspect does, but how can we use this data to strengthen our belonging practices in class? Those are things we'll be considering. And then, this one's focusing on growth opportunities. So for instance, 33% of your historically underrepresented students in AP said that they rarely, if ever, have participated in activities that highlighted the value of a growth mindset for learning. So this is a place to ask the questions of what may need to change, what needs to be messaged in a different way in the coming years. And with that, that brings me to some quick-fire updates from our site leads at Free State and at Lawrence High. So, first up, Free State.
Thank you, Amber. I first want to make sure I tell you how happy we are that we're able to continue this partnership because I don't think we are even scratching the surface of what this survey can do. You know, we talk a lot about the students that need to be in AP, but the amount of social-emotional well-being that we find out from this survey, from those growth cards, is just astonishing. And it has really helped us hone in on some students that definitely need a little bit more support. So our barriers this year was that we started the survey later and then we really had to crunch everything in. Well, I think we did ours during our Superflex Wednesdays in December and that pushed everything back for us. Obviously, that happened because of the pandemic. We anticipate this year, we will be right with the timeline that Amber had laid out. And I think that will help us increase and grow our numbers for the survey. A bright spot this year? One of the things that I look for is a place where all parents could go to see all the AP classes that we offer here in Lawrence, and there wasn't one. So at Free State, we created a document that listed every AP by subject area. And then we had teachers, and our teachers did an amazing job of creating a video about what those classes are about. Because this directly talks about access. What can we offer? What are the classes about? Some of our teachers went above and beyond and even got students to give voice to what these classes are teaching and what they're about. So that was one of the things that we focused in on, being able to open up that access to anybody, all of our students. One of our blind spots was one-dimensional outreach activities. Being virtual, a lot of our outreach had to do with emails, emails to parents, emails to the students, follow-up emails. More face-to-face time will happen this year because we will be in person, and we look forward to that. Also looking forward to the future is increasing our survey rates. That will come as we can find one department to put those surveys in and take some instructional time. Well worth it, instructional time to give those surveys and hopefully get that 90%, if not higher, completion rate. And then our trusted adult training and conversations tracking, that is important because it's teaching our adults. And that was one thing from the survey is, we found out who students identified as a trusted adult. Then when that student was struggling, we had somebody to go to that had already had a relationship, had already built a bond with that student. And it's not just teachers. I will tell you, the number of times I saw one of our security guards down in that trusted adult category was really quite remarkable. So, that training will help us at Free State be better this year.
Thanks. Hi, Mark Pruitt. I'm the Associate Principal at Lawrence High.
So, I haven't been able to hear anything and I'm trying to take it by context clues. Are we switching to Lawrence now? It's been completely mute.
Yes.
Okay.
So, working with Amber this year was really exciting and joyful. The process is amazing. The information and insight is extremely helpful. Our big barrier was reaching our remote students. So, I mean, I don't think it'll come as a shock to anybody that students who were not in a classroom were really challenged and jumping in. So, we dedicated class time for teachers to administer the survey, to get students to participate. And our numbers reflect that our percentage was pretty close to the percentage of students who were at Lawrence High attending. So we did a pretty good job with the students who were in the building, but the students not in the building we struggled with. Having everybody in the building is gonna really help this year. A bright spot. Having those conversations with our site council and inviting some of our parents on-site council and our past team to be a part of our EOS Equity Team really gave us some insights from a parent perspective and just the outreach activities. We incorporated some of the EOS outreach into our individual plans of study. So as teachers were having those conversations with students about making course choices, they had some of that information to recruit and really encourage some students to participate in that. Our blind spot, some of our barriers to accessing AP. The insight cards will be really helpful in providing some insight and just the time crunch. Like Free State, we started December. By the time we were doing enrollment, everything got compressed. So we didn't have the time to do some of the planning that we're looking forward to this year. But I'm really looking forward to identifying some of those freshmen and sophomores who sort of are aspirational, that aren't involved in Avid, to provide that as an avenue to make accessing AP kind of add to their academic skills and just the solid foundation that they'll need. And as we look to the future, the survey completion rates, I was pretty bummed out that ours were so low until I found out that nationally, ours were about 20% higher than what people were seeing across the nation. So with students there and participating and getting more staff involved, I'm looking forward to that. And then just adding that important student voice to our EOS Equity Team and getting students involved to help us understand better what those barriers are and how we can better reach out to students.
As you have...
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Amber. Go ahead.
I still can't hear. And we're patched. Good.
All right, Amber, did you have any concluding comments before we go to questions?
No, I just want to thank you all for letting me be here.
Excellent, excellent. I'm gonna take my mask off for a second. As you have heard tonight, there are many steps that we have gone through this school year. And one of the things that I think that is very powerful is that it has provided us with baseline data. And all we can do from here is to go up. Let me just take a moment to share with you the greatest highlight of this process. And that has been the insight cards. When we shared that information, when teachers, I'm talking about just from Lawrence High School, I know you shared it as well at Free State. When that information was shared and teachers got an opportunity to have a greater insight into the life of a child from a child's perspective, teachers immediately said, can we have a set of insight cards for every class? So to be able to have a classroom of 20 students or 25 students and to be able to have that great insight, that's our overall goal. And our goal is to be able to take our students that were remote and to get a higher success rate and completion rate. That's gonna be very, very important. So this fall, coming in, our goal, Amber has already set this for us, we need to have all the remaining students surveyed by about mid-September. So that's gonna give the first few weeks for those relationships to go ahead and be built and we will continue to build upon those relationships. But by the time we get to the end of September, our goal is to have insight cards for all of our students. We know that tonight, a lot of data was shared. And again, like I said, it is baseline data. It's data that is truly a beginning. A couple notes that I, each time I hear the data and I go through it, I share it with Amber, a couple things that jump out at me every single time. First of all, is the word about messaging. And we have to remember that words matter. And the messages that we send to our students verbally and nonverbally matter. Students can pick up on what we are saying and what we are not saying. And students will respond to it or they will put up a barrier. Another topic that always jumps out for me is the word belonging, belongingness. I could spend the rest of the evening talking about belongingness. The more a student is connected with a caring adult, the greater likelihood a student is to be successful. Schools are only second to families. So that school-connected-ness piece, school-connected-ness is the official term from research, but it's also researched under the title of belonging, belongingness. So, continuing to work with faculty and staffs on how to build relationships. Today, during our opening presentation of all the resources that were at your seats when you came in today, we spent two hours focusing on rebuilding, rebounding, and renewing. Rebuild, rebound, renew, those three words that we focus on. This Jenga game that you see over to the side represents relationships. And when you push a piece out of the puzzle, what happens? The puzzle itself becomes unstable. Sometimes it becomes weak. Oftentimes, it crumbles. So Jenga are like relationships. So if we know that, those are the areas that we're going to focus on and build upon as we enter into this school year. So we hope that as we go throughout this year, that we'll be able to give you another report before we get to August or July. So you can see where we are at a midpoint to... report before we get to August or July, so you can see where we are at a midpoint to really engage students of color and those students that come from lower-income backgrounds. So at this time, we will answer any questions that you may have.
I don't really have any questions. I mean, I'm a data guy. This is what I do, is slice and dice data. So, this was a fantastic presentation, and I think the baseline that you have is great. It's great work. I think the, you know, Amber's guidance in being able to identify those blind spots and looking at the, comparing the two different survey questions is fantastic, and I think, you know, coming back in the fall and with the goal of getting those cards from all students, because, you know, we can take that data and expand it, as you said, just in relationship building, even outside this AP goal, I can see all sorts of ways we can use that to better our students in there and the connectedness that they feel to our buildings. And so, I look forward to having you come back before July and, you know, giving us an update, because I can, I anticipate it'll be yet another positive one on the data and where it's going and what you've done with it and what you've learned. So it was fantastic presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Well, go ahead.
No, not at this time.
Okay. I just want, oh, yes.
Yeah, I just, May tenth, Board approved our equity policy, and part of that policy talked about the elimination of opportunity inequities, particularly for those from marginalized identities. And I think Mr. Rink said it best, we haven't even scratched the surface really to this partnership and what EOS can do for our scholars. So this is definitely the equity work. I do want to thank our Lawrence Schools Foundation. They helped us pay for this, you know, along with our local school budgets, and so that shows their commitment to this work as well. And so, I know they're not here, but I definitely want to publicly thank them for allowing us to do this, because this is the work that will yield results for scholars, when they are in those classes and they're able to be successful, and they believe that the adults in there know that they can be successful. The sky's the limit for our scholars. So I'm excited about this partnership, and I can't wait to see these bars get a little higher there.
Yes, I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you, Amber, Dr. Johnson, everyone that presented tonight. This is what it's about. I am so excited about this, and looking forward to the next report. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Excellent. You know, I was so excited to see the acknowledgement of our LMH students, because our LMH students exemplified what we were talking about tonight. So it really was just a seamless agenda to be able to show our students, and I was going through and asking each student, now, are you in the AP course? And there was only one student that said, you know, I'm not really sure, so I'll be touching base with the, because I'm thinking, if you've done this great job at this academy, I want you in that AP course to continue to work and things. So, anyway, it is very, very exciting to work. It has been wonderful to be able to connect with Amber. As you heard tonight, she can rattle that data off like it is nothing, and I love that about her, and every time we have a question, like, okay, now, tell me again, why is this number here? I was like, oh, yeah, that's why, and she's been wonderful to work with, regardless of how many times we call and whatever we need to do. So, thank you so much, Amber.
Oh, thank you all.
Right.
Thank you so much, Amber.
Have a great evening. We'll talk to you tomorrow.
Thanks you all, too. Bye.
All right.
Bye. For that, that was exciting. So, we are going to go back to item 3.1, and we are going to just have a redo. We're going to reread the motion exactly how we did it the first time. So, who would want to make the motion?
Can I explain why? Sure. I, my name wasn't called during the roll call.
And you just had something to do with you?
No. And I didn't catch it in time for us to fix it before we moved on, so...
Thank you for clarifying. I can definitely, I can read the motion.
Or actually, it would probably be best if we just did, GR, if you'd read it again, I'll redo my second, and then we'll just call the roll again. Thank you.
I move the Board of Education ratify the tentative agreement with the Lawrence Education Association.
This Shannon, I second.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
I actually had a clarifying thing to, can I ask a clarifying question, Erica? Do you mind? Out of order. I just wanted to go back to my comments earlier and just say, there was something on my notes that I forgot to mention. I was asked, when you're looking at them, as you look at what to do with the, if you do anything differently with the mask review, one of the things that I got a lot of emails about, and I'm sure other board members did too, is how do you account for the eleven-year-olds in the middle school, at the middle school level, since they too are not vaccinated like our younger learners in the early grades? And then I also had a request that we look at model programs for Topeka, KCK, and KCMO in terms of their requirements around voluntarily providing vaccination proof in order to be mask-free in their schools. Thank you for giving me that moment, I appreciate it, Erica.
All right, thank you, Colleen. All right, closing announcements.
Just going back to Dr. Johnson's point, you do have Leading the Rebound book from our PD session on today, and that's a book that we not only use today, but we'll use throughout the school year as well. And again, just to reiterate, we will continue to work with our county health officials. As a matter of fact, I was on the phone with one of them today, talking just about that, you know, while we don't want to magically pull a number out, I don't want to, and I will not magically pull a number out, as Superintendent of saying, if we get to eight percent, then we'll do this. But again, leaning heavily on them to see, and seek guidance from them to kind of let us know what our next steps need to be. I do appreciate this community's support. I know these are unpopular decisions, but we're at a point where we need to buckle down again, I would say that. You know, we take a very cautious approach. I think, I know there's a couple of other school board meetings going on tonight, but I think we, Lawrence and maybe KCK, may be the only school districts in the state of Kansas that may be mandating masks in some form or another. And so, I would again encourage those that are not vaccinated to please, please get vaccinated, if not, stay at home, and let's continue to mask up, so we can have an uninterrupted school year. We have some goals that we want to make sure that our students reach, want to make sure that they're successful. We can't do that if we're bouncing back and forth, in-person, out-of-person, out-of-school learning, so that's my plea to the community. And then lastly, we do have our next board meeting on August the ninth. There'll be a presentation of our budget, set the hearing for R and R, as well as, I think that's it. I will not be here, I'll be dropping two kids off at college in Alabama. Patrick Kelly, our chief academic officer, will be in the seat in my stead.
Kelly, did you have something?
No, just congratulations about dropping children off at college. I'll be with you that weekend. Be with you.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Tekin.
All right, anyone, sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carried. Thank you.